Good evening. We're convening a regular meeting of the Council of the City of Newton Falls Chamber, October 21st, 2019. Please turn off all your cell phones or put them to vibrate. Unless pre-arranged, public comments sections are limited to three minutes. A three-minute timer is used. When the timer sounds, you will be asked to conclude your statement. The comment section of the agenda are not a debate or question and answer session. The first public comment section is for agenda items only. Final public comment can be on any issue the public wishes. We ask the spectators to keep quiet during the meeting. If you are too loud or disruptive to all others, the attendees too loud, they will receive a warning. If it happens again, you will be asked to leave. The clerk will now take roll call.
Bariak.
Here.
Savet.
Here.
Waddell.
Here.
Beer.
Here.
Alberini.
Here.
Yes, first of all, we're going to do the pledge of allegiance and then stand for a moment of silent prayer.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do we have anyone tonight that's going to do the prayer?
I will.
Would you please step forward?
Let's pray. Dear heavenly Father, I thank you for a beautiful day, the nice sunshine, the warm weather we had. Lord, I lift up all the councilmen and all the officials to you, that you bless them, Lord, give me unity to work together, Lord. I pray everything you've said is done, let it be glorified you. Bless the ones on watching it right now, bless the families of loved ones, and bless everyone that is here watching this right now live. We thank you and we praise you. Let everything said and glorified you in Jesus' precious name. Amen.
Amen.
Tonight, before we get started, I'd like to tell the public in Newton Falls that I'm going to be acting mayor, I don't know, for two meetings, three meetings, I don't know. I'm going to do the job to the best of my ability with the help of the city manager and our law director. Please bear with me, I'll treat the job with all the dignity and respect it deserves. We've had the roll call. First thing I'd like to do is to explain something and have our city, our law director explain something. Two weeks ago, there was a motion put on the floor to have a budget meeting on the 21st. And when the motion was passed, we didn't know it coincided with the regular meeting, at least I wasn't aware of it when I voted on it. So I'd like to let Mr. Fritz explain the situation we have here tonight.
Mr. Fariak, I think at this time, maybe we can entertain the motion being put on the floor. Find if you have someone that will put the motion on and second it.
Whoa, whoa, whoa.
Then we can be all part of the discussion.
I'm going to put a motion on the floor first. With this being said, then, I'd like to put a motion on the floor to, since they do coincide, I'd like to put a motion to the council tonight that we suspend the budget meeting till tomorrow night or the next night. There's no hurry in the budget, and that we go on with the regular council meeting tonight.
Is there a second?
Okay. With that, then, a motion, there's been a motion to suspend council rules that pertains to the agenda and proceed to new business as promotions since December 16th, 2019, approved by council on tabling public hearings and unfinished business until Monday, November 4th, 2019.
I'll make that motion.
Roll call.
Savet.
Yes.
Waddell.
Yes.
Beer.
Yes.
Alberini.
Yes.
Bariak.
No.
I'd also like to make a motion to suspend Article 10, the rules of council.
Second.
Mayor, can you explain what that is?
That's just the rules of debate. Those are the rules of debate. Motion's been put on the floor, who seconded it? Roll call.
Waddell.
Yes.
Beer.
Yes.
Alberini.
Yes.
Bariak.
No.
Savet.
Yes.
Okay, we'll go into the budget now, then. Please, let's not have a lot of talking until we...
Please get that stuff.
I understand that, please. Till we get, till the people understand what's going on. We're going to go to the budget and then we'll go back to the regular part of the meeting. We'll pick up on reports as soon as we're done discussing the budget.
All right, dear honorable members of the...
Council and the public.
Number one.
I'm sorry.
Ms. Munson, would you like to start? Oh, I'm sorry. Under new business, we have the, under new business, we have authorizing, yes, we didn't suspend a new business. Under new business, we have resolution for...
Excuse me, I think we could go back to the rules.
Well, we...
If we're ready, I will, I'll make a motion to reinstate Article 10.
Yeah.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Beer.
Yes.
Alberini.
Yes.
Bariak.
Yes.
Savet.
Yes.
Waddell.
Okay, now we can go with it, right?
Mr. Fritz. Yes, sir.
Under new business, a resolution authorizing an application to East Gate Regional Chamber of Government Transportation Alternative Program. We have a second on that.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Could I have some input from the city manager?
Sure. This is a TAP grant, it's called, Transportation Alternatives Program, which will, what you're merely approving tonight is my opportunity to submit a grant application to the East Gate Regional, East Gate Regional Council of Governments for a grant for the installation of a continuation of the bike path all the way over to Commerce Park. In fact, I would defer to Councilman Savet for a moment, since he probably is more familiar with these areas than others, if he wanted to contribute to that. But this is merely the opportunity to apply for the grant. This is one of those grants that requires, before you can even apply, you have to have a council manic resolution, and otherwise, I would have waited till the first meeting in November.
Really nothing to add, other than the trail would just lead from Main Street to the east, and then head north to Commerce Park.
Yep.
What is the monetary amount of that grant?
It depends on which portion we get. If it's merely the bike path, I'm guessing that's probably going to be somewhere between $30,000 and $50,000. If it includes platforming of the area where that power station is, Councilman Waddell and I were out there the other day, along with people from Youngstown State, that could be as high as $300,000 to $400,000. But you'll have an opportunity to approve that at the time.
There are a lot of people that just come down here now just to eat their lunches and enjoy it.
And fish.
So, they don't even fish. Thank you. Any more discussion? Roll call, please, then.
Alberini.
Yes.
Bariak.
Yes.
Savet.
Yes.
Waddell.
Yes.
Beer.
Yes.
Okay. Then, item two on new business will be the budget review.
All right, this time I'd like to make a motion to suspend Article 10.
Second.
Roll call.
Bariak.
Yes.
Savet.
Yes.
Waddell.
Yes.
Beer.
Yes.
Alberini.
Yes.
Okay, we're not going to the budget.
All right, dear honorable members of the... The council and the public, as proposed, this is the 2020 operating and capital budget for the village of Newton Falls. This is just a draft, it is a work in progress, as we have submitted to you in the past. Per our charter, we are required to submit a proposed budget plan by November the 15th, so we meet that requirement by starting the budget process today. Each of you have received a turquoise budget book this year. It's made up in several different tabs. There is a budget letter from our city manager, David Lynch. There's some basic budget operating terms, some graphs and description about our income tax projection for 2020, and the income tax allocation ordinance proposed, which is, have no change, that is currently has been passed by council. So, page 11 of the budget book, you'll see how the income tax allocation is broken down by month. Basically, 80% going to general fund, 5% going to the capital improvement fund, 10 and 1/2% going to our street improvement fund, 1 and 1/2% of our income tax allocation goes to parks and rec. We have 1% going to our future building fund, 2% going to what's called our general fund reserve. And then page 12 basically breaks it down by a pie chart of the income tax. And then, on page 14, will basically show the expenditure of the general fund expenses, which will show that our municipal court is our largest department in the general fund, followed by the police department, broken down by expenditures. The next portion of the budget is some legal size ledger paper, which is very important, which is pages 15 and 16. It shows you a historical fund balance, goes from '15, '16, '17, and '18. As of September the 30th, is a projected, as of where we stand at the end of the month of September, where each of the funds stand with their fund balance, if we close the books on that date. We have a blue turquoise column called the projected cash balance. Our estimated revenue is the revenue that we have submitted to the Trumbull County Budget Commission back on July, and we have made some changes since then, looking at our revenue from what we stand as of September the 30th. The next column is called the estimated total resources, which is, you take your ending cash balance projected plus your revenue, that is what we have available to spend. The estimated total appropriations cannot exceed that column, so what we budgeted must make sure it is less. And then the last column, projecting cash balance, now these are just projected cash balances, doesn't mean that this is the actual cash balance at the end of 2020, because we have a very conservative approach with revenue. And we would hope that this picture is everything we do appropriate. We don't want to come back to council and have multiple budget amendments that would show a sign of weakness, and so we typically have done, is we want to appropriate as much as we can, but also have a conservative approach on our revenue. So, last year at this time, when we first presented our budget, the general fund, for example, had only a $5,000 carryover, which we know that's not what we have, so, and we know that there's going to be adjustments made, and that's the purpose, this is council's budget and public's budget, and this is the opportunity to make any adjustments. Typically, what we do with the budget hearings is we go by fund, by fund, by department, but I am looking for input from council, where you guys would like to start.
Mr. Chairman, can I be recognized?
Whoever wants to start, go ahead. I'm not, I'm willing to, I think we have the floor, go ahead, start.
Okay. What I was going to mention to the members of council...
Go ahead.
Is that these, well, a couple of things. I want to make sure everybody understood what the finance director said about the cash balance projections. Every year, she intentionally conservatizes the projection on revenue. Our anticipated cash balance carryover, I had a conversation with Councilman Savet about this on Friday, is about $500,000, which is where we are ending, expected in 2019. She only projected a $5,000 carryover in the budget book last year, carryover about a half a million dollars. We expect the same thing to happen in 2020, but in order to keep us away from a series of amendments back to city council over and over again, she conservatively is projecting the revenue. The reason I especially want to point that out is that our income tax is a bellwether of the condition of our local economy, and as of about a month ago, we are up about $50,000. And so, anticipating that we would have growth at about 6%, which is extremely healthy. And it wasn't mentioned, but Councilman Alberini made a point of reminding me that the city's investment fund, the treasury investment board, is also up about 6%. If you look at the trends in the economy, a 6% growth rate, whereas a CD, would you get, Terry, about a half a percent on a CD if you're lucky? Maybe a quarter of a percent on a CD, is a very healthy growth rate. I had a discussion with Councilman Savet on Friday about, is this conservatism in terms of revenue projection the right way to go with every budget every year? Because we say, well, we're going to have a carryover of about $12,000, well, we know we're going to carryover of about a half a million dollars, and we've lived within that approach. And I understand where the finance director's coming from in that regard, I understand her philosophy, and it's the philosophy that's been used over the last several years in the budget presentations. And I suppose one philosophy behind that is that, well, then, nobody's got a target to shoot for, in terms of thinking that we have additional monies to spend. So, I am comfortable with the way the finance director has approached it, as long as everybody understands that the healthiness of our local budget is reflected in the fact that things are growing, spending is under control, but I do want to make sure there's something that's not forgotten, because it comes up every year. There is built into this budget a 1% pay raise for everybody on staff, is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay, except for those that are under contract.
And except for those under municipal court, that's basically on a journal entry.
Yeah, the judge, by law, determines his own budget.
The other comment, gentlemen, I want to mention, is that what we're presenting tonight is a balanced budget, that is a requirement. So what you have before you is balanced, but there's definitely tweaking and adjustment that we have typically done each and every year. And also, to be conservative, is why we go with this approach, is if we actually appropriate exactly the revenue we have, and if somebody overspends, and you have the control at the category, it's not, council does not have the authorization by line item, but again, it's just to protect, we have spending under control, but in case something does come up, we don't want that spending to not get out of control, we don't want to have some consequences in the future. So this is to make sure it is conservative, and that we don't have to keep coming back to council with amendment after amendment.
And, could you explain the street fund for me?
Yes.
What tab is that?
Okay. What page are you on?
Street fund.
Right now, I'm on page, the appropriation page.
The fund balance page?
Yes.
Okay, so you're on page 15. Okay, so what I'm explaining here, as of right now, the street fund has a carryover of $7,000. We project typically every year, the street department will have a zero carryover balance, because it relies on a transfer from the general fund. So what it's going to show is we're expecting basically about $400,000 in revenue. So we're projecting that we're going to spend that much exactly, so it's balanced to $407,015. Now, the general, the street department receives its revenue from the income tax allocation, it receives a transfer also from the general fund, and it receives revenue, the street department also receives, like their, they have fund 203, which is permissive license tax, they get motor vehicle tax from the state of Ohio on fuel.
Nope.
So that's their sources of revenue.
If I may ask a question?
Of course.
How much exactly does a license tax generate, license revenue generate?
Okay, what's going to go to that page right now?
The reason why I ask it, because people always say, we're paying these hundreds of thousands of dollars in revenue, or license plate fees, and they're, I think it's a little bit, excuse me, but you can do that.
That's an excellent question. We're going to go to fund 203. Let me just get you the page number on the revenue. You want to go to page 44? This is 100% of the vehicle registration revenue, which is called permissive auto tax, and some of this is also motor vehicle tax. So approximately 65% of this is the license fee.
Give me a dollar.
Approximately $60,000.
Okay, so it costs about $120,000 to pave just one mile of road? Okay, so we can only get about a half a mile of road out of all the revenue that we're generating in license plate fees, correct?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Is the gas tax increase in this budget?
Yeah, I did put that in there.
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman, I'd like the finance director to explain a little bit about, everybody's been talking over the last several months about the increase in the gas tax at the state level, and I believe that's built into the budget. Madam Finance Director, could you identify that for them, please? Give them a page number.
So there's multiple page numbers on increases of the gas tax. The first one is on page 39, which goes to fund 201, which is the street department's It would be line item 2014292, IRG Fund 60. So typically, we have received about $103,000, so I am anticipating next year, we are going to see a significant increase of $160,000. The next fund you'll see an increase would be fund 202. Again...
What page is that?
That is on page 42. We're estimating, most of that is going to go to fund 201, but there is a slight increase for fund 202 to $14,000. We basically have been on average about $8,000 in the past for fund 202. 202 stands for state highway.
Okay, so 160 grand is not incorporated currently into the road budget. That's just a little sugar on top. Gotcha.
I think we also, just to add to that, we take the license plate money, and we couple that with money from the county, and we go to them for bidding on the roads and stuff, and try to get a better bang for our dollar by working with the county. So we stretched that money a little further. So it's, it takes $125,000 to do the mile, but we can stretch our $65,000 a lot further by working with the county and buying stuff at the county pricing, and so...
Do you anticipate us, we being able to do at least as much, if not more, next year? That's a question the public can understand.
Yes.
There.
At least as much, if not more.
If not more, thank you. That's, the public's got to, thank you.
Sure.
In the general fund budget for police, on page 22.
What was that, Mr. Savet, I didn't...
Page 22.
General fund, page 22.
Please, page 22.
Under supplies and materials, fund number 52414. There is a significant increase on that line item? Sure.
There is not a significant increase, it's exactly what is budgeted for this year.
Okay.
We just kept it the same, and yes, the police chief typically has not spent anything in the past, but he says he won't need it for next year.
Okay.
It's typically what he does appropriate each and every year.
Chairman, could I be heard in that matter? Members of council, Mr. Chairman, ladies and gentlemen, as a capital matter, and I'm just mentioning it as a footnote, because what you have here is an operating budget, but it's related to the question that Councilman Savet was asking, and I think this is what I'm about to say, is the reason he might have asked about it, and that is that the city is required to switch over its radio system to a new system, which is being referred to as the Marx radio system, and it's a function of the fact that our city police department radio channels have to coincide with the same band and communication system as the county, because if law enforcement isn't working together, you know, that's one of the reasons after 9/11, the federal government tried to organize all law enforcement agencies together. Well, in this community, we not only need to stay in touch with one another in terms of all the emergency bands, but we have to be able to communicate with the county sheriff, because both agencies are working in conjunction with another, and especially in an emergency, there's got to be a cohesive communication system. Well, the county sheriff has gone to a new system, and if we don't switch over to this newer system, then we'll lose that communication with the county sheriff. And we anticipate, not only will the system coincide with the county, but it will end up penetrating into more areas and be more effective, and that's a safety measure. But I know we've been talking about that on and off, and the question that you generated, Councilman Savet, see to me, may that an opportune time to explain that.
Okay, I have something to add on that. Honorable members of council, the police capital is not found at all in the general fund, nor is the finance department's capital, nor is the street department capital. It's always been, part of the income tax allocation goes to what's called the capital improvement fund. So if we want to talk about the police radios, please go to page 82 of your budget books. Okay, for the police department, they currently are still leasing out one police vehicle. We have a payment to make in the year 2020, which is the capital interest, and we do have the radio and repeaters. We're going to propose, we're doing a lease on that for approximately five years, and there is a debt payment for the radios, that is a requirement, which is $18,739. I know the police department is in need of more vehicles, but right now, with also the needs of the street department, the annex building, finance department putting no request in capital. Right now, it's just being split between street and police, so that's something we're going to have to discuss. Right now, our capital improvement fund does not have enough to carry all the obligations, but we are basically taking our bigger items that are definitely required, and get those taken care of first.
Mr. Chairman, I'm going to make a remark with, since the rules are suspended, I'll jump in here if that's okay.
They are suspended, sure.
Thank you. The dollar amount as it relates to these lease payments, while you see that here, and we can handle that capital payment, there are a couple of grant applications that the chief and I have pending right now. One is for the radios, and one is for the repeaters. So while we're out of an obligation of transparency and an obligation to make sure we can pay for everything, we've built that expenditure into the budget. However, if those grant applications are successful... However, if those grant applications are successful, that would mean that we can come back and delete that in terms of what we have to take out of our own pocket. Anyways, we've built it into the budget, but we have a grant application for the radios themselves and a grant application pending for the repeaters. And by the way, so that's made clear, the repeaters are merely boosting devices so that the, the police signal gets everywhere it needs to get. It sort of takes the signal that's weakened and then re-concentrates it so it can get to important areas of the city, especially into the buildings. That's probably one of the key things.
You're talking about the radios and the... Zoning office shows thirty-five hundred dollars for vehicles and radio. Can you split that down as the vehicles and radios, and is his radio under that grant if you're trying to get the grant? Is his radio included?
I honestly don't know the answer to that question, so I could ask, as the finance, do you know where that is?
Yes. The zoning department's radio is not part of the grants, it's strictly just police, and the lease payment is strictly police.
It doesn't qualify as a safety.
It doesn't qualify.
So we need thirty-five hundred dollars of my radio?
So we put thirty-five hundred dollars in for the radio for the zoning department in her budget, as an estimate.
I just wanted, because we're getting them, so I just...
Yeah, yeah.
They were included there.
Yeah, it's not included in that, and of course, we prioritize everything, so if count, and it doesn't qualify for safety, that's one of the issues, these grants, their applications are very, very specific.
I disagree.
It doesn't qualify for safety. You have a gentleman out there that's going house to house and doing things, and he needs the communication just like anybody else, so it is a safety issue, he has a radio.
By the way, I'm not disagreeing with that part. It's the people that create the grants.
Okay, there's one to clarify that.
Yeah, they disagree with me. One of the elements, they have specific exclusions in these grant applications, and both these applications, if it's not related specifically to police or fire, then they mark it as ineligible.
Okay, just asking.
Do we wanna jump back to the general fund, or do you wanna stay in capital?
Wherever you guys wanna go. I'm just, right now, we're, it's up the council, you guys wanna lead and...
We're using the Gestalt.
You ask us questions and fire away.
Okay, no, no, okay. Page twenty-five, under General Fund, Zoning.
Okay.
Just two questions. One, under the contractual services, the fifty-two-three-one-four insurance, is that just part of your overall insurance policy for the city? And it's just broken out per department?
Per department, yeah. Five-two-three-one-four insurance is the property liability insurance.
Okay.
Which is, yes.
Okay.
And also covers vehicles.
I assume that, but I just wanted to make sure. That was...
For all departments, you're gonna see that insurance down below is for the liability in vehicle, and then if you see the insurance at the top with personnel, that's health insurance.
And we're not on insurance for the zoning office, huh?
We are. Thank you.
Yes.
So we have it...
It's just, it's not included in the budget.
Right, we need to make an adjustment.
Okay.
Good catch.
Thank you.
Is there a number for that fund already?
Um, let's see.
Probably one-two-zero?
It would be... Five-two-one-one-five.
And then while we're under zoning, under Supplies and Materials, it's actually a question about this fiscal year or not, actually the next one, but under equipment for, we spent three thousand eight hundred ten dollars and sixty-six cents, so just wanted to have a little explanation.
Uh, that was for an iPad and some different equipment for the zoning office.
If I may, Chairman, question in regards to professional services. I see the five thousand seven hundred and thirty-nine dollars and ninety, ninety cents. What is that spent on? That would be five-two-three-one-six?
Most of that is grass mowing, contracts.
Grass mowing, that falls under zoning?
Yes.
Okay.
For, you know, for somebody not mowing the grass within six inches, they have to put signs out, and then we have to contract with, there's two vendors that they go ahead and mow. So most of the contracts dealing with that would be for grass assessments.
And would that be the same category that we would take out for Dollar General that's going in if we needed to have MS consultants review the plans? Would that come out of that same line item?
Yes.
Mr. Martin. Correct me, you're asking for ten thousand though this year, right?
No, ten thousand was this year's budget. There's actually an increase for twenty-twenty, it's twelve thousand.
Twelve thousand, excuse me, I see it now. Excuse me, twelve thousand. That's because of the full-time?
Correct. And we now have a copier at the office, and there's a maintenance agreement on the, the copier.
The grass cutting part, as I've stated before, there's a lot of money we just don't recover. We, we spend it and we can't recover it, and I think sometime we need to address that somehow. We've, we've gotta figure out how we, you know, I think cutting the grass and keeping the city look, you know, nice and neat and clean is a good idea, but we lost, what, seven or eight thousand dollars this year in grass cutting fees that we're not gonna recoup because when the house goes into foreclosure and the county takes it, we lose all that. And it's kind of a bad situation, but I'm not sure how we correct it because we can't mow it ourselves yet, so I'm not sure how we do that. But we need to look at how we can not spend so much money cutting grass and still keep that done.
Well, if I can, Mr. Chairman, one, the reason why that's one of the most difficult areas is that the house that isn't cutting grass is a house that's most likely to be under foreclosure to begin with. There's nobody paying attention to it because of the foreclosure issue, so it's kind of a, a, a combination of devilish circumstances. Grass that's not being mowed, and if you wanna know if a house is under foreclosure, first thing you need to do is see if somebody's cutting the grass.
Mr. Chairman, so to that point... This is a question, oh, we got the Ace Legal team here, so one of you guys should be able to answer this, okay? If, if it's in foreclosure at the bank, why can't we backcharge the bank for that?
Funny how the legislature made a system where the banks don't have to be responsible. Ohio law is written to protect the banks. If an individual takes it in foreclosure, we can do something with it. We generally, when they do a foreclosure, recognize our lien that we would have on there that's sent out once a year by the finance department, and it's added on to the, to the debt for the building. But the Ohio law pretty much stops us from going after banks.
Thank you.
And we have about probably twenty-five buildings like that that we're dealing with on a regular basis. If that answers your question, sir.
Yeah, thank you, sir. Sorry, I was back there or something. What was?
Question for the law director. Mr. Fritz, we, we had talked before about, that's all right, we had, that's all right, we had talked before about taking a look at some alternatives. Do you think that maybe we can some way figure something out? This, the point the mayor makes is good, we're losing money, but there has to be something.
Mr. Lynch has come up with some ideas on how we should proceed. We're trying to look through them, things such as asking the banks if they wanna sell them to us, look at the land bank to take over. About two or three options that we have, but we're kinda working through them, first of all, on an individual basis by lot, because it kinda depends where they are and who owns them. But there are some alternatives that we have been looking at, and I think we have one in particular we're gonna probably get ownership of probably within the next thirty or forty-five days, get that prepped for demolition. It's easier to take care of a vacant lot that we mow, it's ours, at least we know it's taken care of, and we're getting something for the time that they mow it.
We also do quite a few lots, you know, I had the opportunity to ride around a little bit there, and we do quite a few lots of people who just don't cut their grass. I mean, they're, they live there, they own their home, they just live there, and we still can recoup that, because if they don't pay it, it goes on their tax duplicate, and we aren't, we aren't recuperating some of that. I mean, now, some of it we do get back, they do pay, but there's a lot of places that we, we've gotta be able to figure out how we can...
The law is on things like when people pass away, probate court, that, that part of the lien's in there, before that home transfers from one generation to the next, if the next generation is taking the property, we recover it.
Okay.
If it's a private sale, we generally recover that. There is a percentage of these that aren't just abandoned. We do recover a percentage of these, probably close to half is recovered.
Really?
At some point.
Wow.
Yeah. If you go over the cash flow system, people that defaulted fifteen years ago and then started, start to catch up and those come back. It's not a significant amount of money, but it's, some of them are getting, when the liens get unregistered, unless it's totally abandoned or foreclosed by a bank, we, we recover it.
Mr. Chairman, if I could, and members of council, ladies and gentlemen, I became the city manager November last year, I'm coming up to my one-year anniversary, and one of the things I've tried to be a demon on are issues like that. There's a house at the corner of Main Street and Center Street, which was notorious for not cutting its grass and having vehicles all over the place for a long time. Notice that matter's been resolved. That property looks neat right now on the outside, those vehicles are gone. One Thousand Newton Drive, which was a notoriously overgrown place, which also suffered from drug activity inside that vacant building, was deeded over to the city of Newton Falls and will be torn down sometime within the next week. There's another property located next to the Ohio Tax Lady, which is what the law director, I think, was referring to, and we anticipate being able to do something with that as well. And criminal prosecution for some of these matters is where we're starting to be more aggressive as well. It's, it's, it's a matter of using the stick and also a spoonful of honey, trying to create a, a, a way to get people to do things. But I will tell you that the new zoning enforcement officer has taken the direction from him very seriously, and the trick is, as you mentioned, Councilman Waddell, not to wait until the property's sold at the end of an estate or something like that, but get something done in the meantime. And I think our batting average has been better during the last year than it was before that, and I think next year will be even better than that.
My question, it carries over to multiple funds, is the administrative cost allocation?
Yes, the administrative cost allocation was actually developed and passed by council in two thousand and sixteen. The plan was actually done by Travis Halesko, the State Auditor's Office. A lot of work and studies went into that. Actually started with my predecessor, and we actually finished it when I first came on board. It was part of an audit citation in the past, so this is something very important, it's a plan that's been in place. Basically, there's a formula, there's a long list of requirements for the cost allocation. We have to find every piece of legislation, contracts, number of checks issued in a year, but goes on salaries. It is a detailed formula that has been passed and approved and by the State Auditor's Office as well as this council, and it's been in place since two thousand and fifteen.
Do you know what those percentages are?
They change every year. Basically, it could be, you know, like twenty-five percent for water, twenty-seven percent for sewer, and typically, electric's a lot higher, but it's a detailed formula. I can get you those percentages, but it changes every year, based upon the number of volumes of checks issued, number appropriate, it goes on appropriations. I work with Kathy each year doing requests of information, that is a part of the formula for this.
How much percentage-wise does that administrative cost allocation account for, within our general fund? The revenue side?
Okay, well, this is only the city administration, the finance department, law, law department, and city council, because these divisions work on tasks that only involve just governments, general government, as well as working on the enterprise funds of water, sewer, and electric. I don't have the plan in place with me, I didn't print it out, but again, typically, it's like twenty-five percent for water. Again, it varies. It varies each year, the percentage's changed each year.
Yeah, but it's not fifty or sixty percent?
Added up total under different things, it could end up to being like totally forty-five percent, depends on the category. It goes professionals, or it starts off with administrative costs, it goes down to travel. Each category has a certain percent.
Well, the only reason I say that is because I remember there was a time when we had, we were doing twenty-five percent across the board, and the state said in order to be able to use those allocations, you had to justify those costs.
Right.
And I, I don't remember seeing anything out there that says you can justify it up to fifty percent, and if you look at, under the...
No, it's not fifty percent, but...
Well, I'm just, if you look at the travel and transportation, you have two thousand dollars, and we're still in city administration. You have, on, in line fifty-two, two-ten, you have two thousand dollars, but you have twelve hundred dollars for the, you know, administrative cost allocation, which is, you know, sixty percent of the, of the fund.
But then you gotta take that cost, it's like typically twenty-five percent goes to water, twenty-five percent sewer, so it can be definitely more than twenty-five percent based upon the formula. And I would have to get you that information. It's a plan.
I think it's appropriate, Councilman Sabet and I actually discussed this earlier today. In fact, Councilman Waddell and I were discussing this a little bit earlier this evening. The State Auditor's Office is the one that set the parameters for our cost allocation. Since we are in the first year of a two-year private assigned audit, I've asked the Finance Director to talk to the auditing firm about the idea of just looking at the cost allocation formula, because it would make sense to see if that formula's still working or not working.
And just for the, the comments, you know, I, I understand the, the chain of command in, in the city and how it should work, and I, I realize the responsibilities that are placed on our city clerk and, and what the work that she does, and I, I think that her pay schedule should be, you know, someplace in there, but, you know, when the zoning inspector makes more than the city clerk, I, I question that, and I would like to see an additional three thousand dollars put into the budget for her salary.
Under contractual services? Uh, there's two questions I had. The, and they're really more so to twenty-nineteen numbers than twenty-twenty numbers. Why was there eighty-one thousand, or eighty-one thousand dollars approximate in professional services, which is way more than what was budgeted, and then the same goes to the administrative cost allocation?
Okay, so in two thousand and nineteen, city council, we had a change with more contracts. We had a change in contracts with Gregory Films, we had more contracts with economic development and also with annexation. Typically, those are the major three, and economic development contracts. And anytime we seek professional assistance or a legal opinion, that also gets charges there. So there was more activity done this year than there has been done in the past.
Okay.
We expect it'll be less, Councilman.
And then, what about the administrative cost allocation, is that because of the increase in the professional services?
Right, so I just took it back to where it was in the previous budget, because I'm anticipating that would go back down.
If you look back on here, if you just...
Yeah. Yeah. Okay. So, page thirty-two, finance. Sorry, I went through this with the point to come.
No, that's mine, that's what we want you to do.
Um, so, under fifty-two-one-one-zero, wages, I see there's a twenty-five thousand dollar increase.
There's crack to hire an additional personnel to the department, which I know Judge Philip Bigarito has been, definitely been in communication, we definitely need. There's been more grant requirements, more auditing requirements, and the volume of work in our department has increased.
Who we got?
Position B.
An administrative assistant position.
Full-time position?
Um, yes, we're looking for a full-time position.
Yeah, roughly ten or eleven bucks an hour then?
Correct, it'd be a salary position.
So basically with your, if I may, basically with your increase of revenue stream of six percent, you're handling more of a volume of revenue with less people right now, as it stands?
Correct, and there's more grant requirements that the judge needs and more reports done as well, and more analysis and different reports, and obviously, we're doing a lot of analysis, just for example, with one topic alone, like Amp Ohio Utilities, so that is a, a lot of volume of work in our office. We have had this, this year alone, tons of public records requests that we've not had, and that takes amount of time and...
Lot of labor.
A lot of labor as well, as well as doing the Ohio checkbook and this project. We have a lot of different, unique, special projects going on this year, and it puts us a little bit behind, and so we need to make sure that the public records and our public is taken care of.
So if I may, so you're also doing the grant requests for the court system too as well?
Correct.
Are we compensated for that, that, that labor and those hours invested in that?
No, it's just general fund money.
Well, yeah, in a way, yes. Not that I'm, I'm not, I'm not having an internal debate here, but we, we sort of get the money back through the back door and explain what I mean by that.
True.
Probably bad phraseology. The, the grant activity for the judge is going up, and we need someone in finance to process that. The successful reception of those grants then reduces the total spending level over at the court. Then the court turns over a higher revenue from fines and costs back over to the general Then the court turns over a higher revenue from fines and costs back over to the general fund. So to some extent, that investment in that department comes back through the side door.
Have to get the grant first.
Correct.
Yeah.
Okay.
Tony, first, tell me if this is appropriate, if not, I'll ask you at a different time. When I ask a question, you can tell me to move on. The, you're gonna hire, thank you. We'll do that. You're gonna hire a new employee there, is that employee gonna be a civil service employee?
The plan we've had is be an unclassified position, we have the ability to do that. But before that position's filled, this council has to vote.
Yeah, we haven't done it yet.
No, I just, but I'm asking, if we do that, is that person gonna be a civil service employee?
The intention's no, we want administrative assistants that can actually, I want to say, move around if necessary, if that, if it works fulfilled at the life finance a year or two from now, I think they can use the city administration, for the city major, or other departments. So the whole idea is bring in someone, we need someone more important than a temporary person, and we don't want to make a situation where we're creating a permanent position, civil service at the finance. So the intention of administrative assistant, full-time, unclassified, as a full-time city employee.
Just correct.
And this council gets to decide on whether that position exists or not.
Okay. You want an administrative assistant. My opinion from this council person is for $10, $11 an hour, you probably won't get one. If you want to value add a person, you probably have to raise the ante a little bit in someone who's gonna stay. Just a, just a suggestion.
We're trying to be extremely prudent. We just didn't want to increase the salary really high, so...
Yeah.
Something I didn't see in zoning, where does the boards and commissions, or does that come out of boards and commissions? Page?
That's page 34.
It comes out of page 34. I wasn't sure which one it actually came out of, so...
Bless you.
Page 47, under parking recreation, special revenue funds. The wages in that fund, since I know we don't have...
We really don't anticipate any changes from this year, it's seasonal, part-time labor.
For like grass mowing?
Correct, at the park.
Can I ask a question about that? It just kind of seems like a...
It's one employee.
I understand that, but you know, it's the, the street department does the parks. Rather than putting the money into the parking wrecks and then taking it and paying a guy out of there from the street department, why don't you just put the money in the street department and fund the guy out of the street department to cut grass around the city, because that's what we do. It just seems like you're, you know, you're just, we're doing double bookwork there, we were talking about that earlier. You know, if you're gonna have a street department employee spend time in the parks, and you're gonna charge money to the parks, just pay the guy out of the street department, put the money in the street department and, and do that, and it just, because it looks kind of funny how we're hiring people in the parks, and we're not really, it's a street department employee that's doing the work.
Well, see, in government, we have tracked the revenue, and there's certain revenue that goes to the park department, and we have to look at the regional ordinance that created the park and rec. But what I can take under advisement and consult are auditors, and see if maybe we can bring legislation before council, it makes sense to maybe combine the two funds as one fund.
We did drop that revenue down to, what was it, 5% or something like that, to go out of the...
Correct, 1.5% to park and rec.
Yeah.
And 10.5 going to street department, yes. That is an excellent suggestion, and I will have an answer for you.
Thank you. Is there money somewhere in the park and rec fund to address anything over at the community center? Whether it be renovation, or, you know, if something urgency happens over there, is there money to do that within the budget?
We typically only appropriate utilities for the community center, which is on page 49.
So let's say like a branch goes through the roof, you know, because I think there's a tree there.
We do have insurance set aside for the purposes of casualty, so that building is protected.
Okay.
Where do you, does it date the money for capital projects, under the capital tab, or under the street department, or where do you...
Well, capital is only for street and the police department, the other capital for the enterprise funds would be in their capital funds.
Well, I'd like to see, into the, then the street department, I'd like to see $10,000 specifically set aside to clean the ditches out on 534 and possibly put in some piping and that, and work for matching grants from the, with the county and that. Those ditches just have to be cleaned, I realize that we don't have the equipment to do that, and we can contract with the county to do those things, and I haven't got any numbers from the county yet.
Okay.
I'd like to see some money set aside, so that we can actually get that cleaned down, get that water that's flowing everywhere, and going in people's driveways, and down into the garages and stuff, going to where it's supposed to. Even today, there's water laying all over 534 and the ditches, it doesn't go anywhere.
Okay, so the street capital, if you want to look, is on page 83, and again, the capital improvement fund is really tight, and it's basically, we're using it to pay off their brand-new dump truck lease, and we did put 18,000, $19,800 for brine equipment for the salt. So I guess we're gonna have to do some tweaking to figure out where we can come up with 10,000.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I don't have an objection. Obviously, this is a sort of living and breathing document, and based on what happens at this meeting, we make a few slight changes before we put it in legislative form, which again would be sometime in November. So we'll go back and take a look at that. I do want to confer further with Thomas Faulkner Associates. As you know, we brought a hydrologist in to look at some of these issues, and there's a, we have an attache with the Youngstown State University, working on a couple of grants for us as well. And it may be that there's some federal grants that could be helpful in that regard, but I do want to see if we can set aside some money in the next proposal, because the issue of drainage around the city, as you know, has been unfortunate, well, those issues just gets worse and worse and worse over time if you're not, not taking care of it, so we'll, we'll figure it out.
We haven't got Thomas Faulkner's report back, right?
No, no.
Well, I'm just saying that if you, even if you do go with the grants, you still might have matching funds that are gonna be required to do that with the grants. So with the county, you're basically just hiring the equipment, and we would supply the labor and that, and I don't know what that cost would be for approximately two miles of ditching out on 534 from, you know, the soccer fields out to the city limits, is where that kind of needs to be done. So if we put that money in there, then we have money already put into the budget for matching grants, or to pay the county if that's, you know, what we need to do.
Sure.
But if we don't put it in now, then we have to try to get it in later, and that's why I think we should put something in there now, because we've talked about it, it's been going around now for years, and it, it just needs to be addressed. It looks, anyway, when you talk about cleaning the grass off the sidewalk, then you drive down there, and there's water laying all over the road, or on the ditches all year long, because there's no place for it to go.
All right, well, we'll make, sure there's an adjustment in the...
Members of council, I would recommend that not come out of the street capital, but come out of the stormwater utility, would make more sense for that to be added.
Where we'd like to put it, I just wanted to earmark some money, so that if we start working on grants, we have the money set aside to do matching funds, or to pay the county to come in and do it.
Oh, I did have, I'm sorry, Mr. Chair, I did have a question in regards, going back to Dove telling Councilman Savet said about the parks. Do we have any capital expenditures in place for the parks for 2020?
Yes, and we have to make an adjustment on that. We are in process of getting potentially a playground equipment. I didn't put it in the budget yet, but that would be page 48. And we currently have one mower, Harry has requested a mower for the park department, and he said that would be $15,000. We will be responsible for a portion of the nature of works grant. We applied for that June 1st, we typically would hear that on October 1st. I have received a phone call from the Department of Natural Resources, it's between us and another community. They've asked us to increase our local share, but I don't have final numbers to actually share as of yet, but once I hear from the state, they said a letter should be coming out within next week, and then once I get that, that number will come in here.
Someone to throw, go ahead. Someone to throw a curveball at you. I've, I've spoken to Mr. Lynch previously, and as I travel around, the baseball league has done a great job with that park, the park itself physically. I would like to see us, if possible, allocate $50,000 to that park, to establish some floral gardens and some fountains in that place, to help beautify, beautify it even more so. I think a park is a, that park is a, is the epicenter of Newton Falls. We've got people that come from all over, Portage County, Summit County, Jogga County, and play ball there. And as I travel around and see how other parks are, I think there's a lot of potential there, and I would like the council to explore that if possible.
Yeah, the only problem is the park department and revenue will only get $34,000.
You can always say no.
So we have to really, anyway, we got park equipment, we know that we may be...
Right.
An obligation, and we're gonna have to do a lot of tweaking on the park department.
Mrs. Munson, Ms. Munson, didn't we spend all the money on the park last year for, for the fencing and that? Didn't the bulk of the money go for the new ball field fencing?
As of today, we, yes, we spent 50, about $50,000 on that.
Well, I don't want to rain on anybody's parade, but we have other parks in the village, Sixth Street Park, other parks that would like to have a little bit of money too. And I feel that the other parks should have a little bit of money too, besides just one park. I understand, you know, what we're going at, and maybe, is there enough money, we can put a little bit more money in, and not just give it all to the...
Not unless you guys want to reallocate your income tax allocation to formula.
Well, what is the real, 10%?
No, for the park, it's 1.5%.
I mean, excuse me.
I would not recommend changing our income tax allocation at this point in time. I would think we would need to look at grant revenue.
We can explore that going forward then.
Mm-hmm.
Well, I think what Councilman Albrecht is saying makes sense, I mean, that, the city, the community center park is the focal park in the city, and we certainly don't want the rest of the parks to decay and go away, and we do maintenance on those parks as necessary, and I'm not sure what kind of upgrades and that, that there's not been any suggestions or any studies or anything done that says we need, you know, an extra slide or swing or whatever, but Harry's been pretty good about going over and doing the maintenance and cleaning up some of the issues with each park as we do that. But, you know, the community center park is the focal park in the city, and we could do some things that are relatively expensive to make that look a lot nicer than it is.
Thank you for bringing that up, because that actually reminds me of a question. CIC, the park plan, all that stuff you mentioned from the, bringing that money forward, where is that at? Is that even in the budget this year?
Yeah, the, I don't think the CIC is in the budget as of now, because I don't anticipate having a plan to fund the CIC till sometime in January or February. And I understand that's how you're planning your operating, but we've got a couple of irons in the fire for potential sourcing of the CIC. And until I'm able to dot the i's and cross the t's, I'm not prepared to present to council, but it won't be coming from the funds that you're allocating tonight.
Under the income tax fund, I would assume that I would have seen in page 63 or 64, but where does the money come out for Rita, or do they take it out on the front end and then just give us the money on the back end?
We just, basically, they do monthly distributions, and they take the money out of our distribution, so we're recording only the net revenue, so there's no actual expenses recorded. However, during our audit, they did recommend, I'm gonna have to, they want gross revenue and gross the actual expenses.
Okay.
But before, we've, we've just been doing it as net, so that is a change coming.
Okay. And I was gonna ask if we did a periodic review of Rita to make sure we're actually getting what we're actually supposed to be getting, and I...
Yes, we did do confirmations with that during our audit, yes.
We'd be meeting with the department heads too, to review the budget for...
No, this year, we were requested to not bring departmental heads forward, that's the reason why we sent it out also in digital versions, encouraging any other questions that you have, so we could present them administratively. I think that was part of what was behind the motion, that Councilman Bariak and Councilman Savet presented to the council. So that was the sort of change in the budget methodology. I would defer to Councilman Savet, since he has some experience at the county level in that regard.
Yeah, and I think it's better this way, that the department, you know, the chief executive officer gets department heads, figures out the budget, and presents it to council. So we're not having to go through...
So we're not beat up.
They're not beat up.
The department heads did submit though their plans or proposals or askings for the budget.
Yes, and by the way, that doesn't vary that much on the operating level, but on the capital level, you can see there are things, and that's where the biggest variation comes in. Mr. Shaver's department operates with a four-man staff, and the operating costs go up as the cost of products and various things goes up, but every now and then, he needs to make sure that there are capital areas that have to be reinvested in, substituted, or new program. As a matter of fact, Mr. Chairman, I'll sort of take a, take a cue off of that part of the discussion, to let you know, and it was mentioned a moment ago, that Mr. Shaver's department for capital has bought an $18,000 expenditure, because we are attacking snow this year with even more vigor and aggressive than we did last year. In fact, the program this year is gonna be called Operation Snow Tiger, and our effort is going to be to get the snow off the roads, utilizing salt-enhancing liquid, which is referred to in the industry as brine. And the city has not used brine before, but what it does is it reduces, it lowers the level of the efficacy in terms of temperature of the salt. So the salt was more effective at a lower temperature, and quite frankly, I want Newton Falls to be the blue ribbon winner in terms of dealing with the snow this winter. And we've got now with these additional capital outlays with the brine equipment, and we have developed a personnel utilization plan, utilizing some other departments. You know, Harry's department isn't the only department that's got trucks that have a plow on it. And so our philosophy is going to be, when there's a big snow, all hands on deck. We're gonna be utilizing people, getting them out of their beds at 4:00 in the morning from other departments to help us, and we think you'll see a big difference this year.
Ms. Munson, I really think I understand and know the answer, but I would rather hear you explain it one more time. Under the city administration and for the cost allocations, everything's in parentheses, but when you go back to the enterprise funds, to the water department, the cost allocations are not?
Correct, because in, on the enterprise fund, it's an actual true expense, and why it's in parentheses on the general fund, it's not truly an expense, it's a reduction of an expense.
Okay. Under sewer, page 96, I just see that there's a capital outlay of 130,000. I just wondered if that, if it really was.
That is, Mr. Mike Novotny has proposed a bunch of upgrades in, with his storm sewer substations, typically that's what that is for.
Does that include the matching, um...
The matching for issue... One is on $90,000, which is also part of at line 52514. So this is, the 130,000 is EPA requirement on capital improvements, that he has a plan in place, so if you have detailed questions, that is a question to ask Mr. Novotny.
Yeah, if I might, on that topic somewhat related to it, we anticipate approval of the sewer project, the sewer project for Medley, we anticipate OHA Public Works Commission approval for the resurfacing of First Street, and we are pressing forward with a third project, which I've talked to... and we are pressing forward with a third project, which I've talked to Councilman Bariak about, which is Washington Street. And we actually picked up a couple points at the meeting of Eastgate last week, and so we're pushing, pushing, pushing. We've never gotten three projects in one year from Ohio Public Works Commission before. In fact, I'm not sure we've ever gotten more than one project at a time, so I'm pretty sure we're going to get two, we're pushing for three. But again, you know, a grant is always a double-edged sword because it requires a certain degree of matching. The Washington Street grant has actually been applied for as a loan, and it gets amortized over a 10-year period at 0% interest. And one of the reasons that enhances our chance of getting that project is that communities, generally speaking, tend to shy away from applying for the loan program, and then there's a bunch of money left over, and 0% over 10 years, that's a pretty good deal. So Mr. Novotny, Jeff Hawkins over in the water department, and as relates to First Street especially, Mr. Shaver will be very happy. And that's a nice, by the way, that is a way of enhancing our application that you approved tonight for the bike path, because it's on the same area of Commerce Park. And what we're trying to do is get these grant committees to understand that we're sort of consolidating our efforts, that if we can get the grant for First Street, that will enhance the grant for the tap grant for the bike path and the enhancement of the Commerce Park area. And it's, I call it grant synergy. Give me Grant A, because we got a pretty good shot at getting Grant B, and by the way, that might be related to Grant C, and let's get all of them all at one time.
Someone asked me, Mr. Lynch, how far is that up First Street or down First Street?
I actually sent a diagram of a bike path potentially to this council.
I'm talking about the paving of First Street.
Oh, well, it's up to where it becomes good again when you get into Braceville. You know, there's a section where you can see the difference in the pavement. Yeah, yeah, that's right. It goes already up to the sign that says Welcome to Braceville.
Thank you.
I know that Washington Street project was one of the projects, and we didn't talk about it specifically on Washington Street, but we did talk about after the training seminar that Eastgate had about all the money that's left over to the end of the year, because nobody wants to take the time to work on those 0% loans and that, and for some reason, they don't do that. And so I'm glad to see that we've put that forward, and we might take advantage of that, because there's usually a good pile of money there at the end of the year.
Yeah, well, people think, they say a grant, well, that's free money. Well, you still have your match. But if you're getting money at a 0% interest rate, then you're amortizing it over a 10-year period, it's almost as good, but you're right, people tend not to dive into those programs.
Thank you, Mr. Lynch. People on Washington Street have been asking for that for a long time, sir, even before you've been here.
Well, by the way, I'm going to place a footnote to that, say thank you to Mark Stipper, our code enforcement officer. One of the things about our code means keeping our properties dry, and he took the time and did a door-to-door survey of all the residents on Washington Street, and those surveys turned over to the Ohio Public Works Commission, one of the reasons why we got some additional points for that application. So that's not a slam dunk, that's not a sure thing yet, but we're a lot closer, and I believe the Eastgate process is going forward, as you know, and as Councilman Waddell knows.
Thank you.
Under the electric department, page 101, there was just a $230,000, I was just making sure we hit the big ones.
That $230,000 is to put money aside for the Church Street substation, I believe is what it's called.
Also, there seems to be, I realize there's no request in the electric department for additional employee, but it's been shorthanded over there for quite a long time because of issues, and how do we address those and make sure that we have staff that's, you know, able to handle it without cutting ourselves short? Is there any way we can, you know, enhance the manpower over there, or what do we...
Bill just picked up two new employees, so we expect that issue that you're referring to to resolve itself within the next 60 to 90 days, and that automatically will fill that gap.
Okay.
And we should have one employee return relatively soon, that's all I can say about that.
Part of the issue you're talking about is being shorthanded too. Okay, that's good, that's good. And I think also when you talk about the $230,000 on the budget there for the substation at Church Street, I think that if you really get down to it, you know, we have a rate study coming, and part of that rate study is the amount of money we have to spend to repair our facilities, and I think that Mr. George went through his processes and procedures and what needs to be done right now and what can be put off for a little bit without causing us any issues to, you know, help the rate study stay where it's at. So rather than spending, you know, $400,000 or $500,000 for repairs at that substation, he's looked at the things that are most critical and wants to repair those and not do a complete overhaul at this point in time yet due to some other things that we're working with AMP on, on the high side part of that.
And then, like, one last question for me. Under debt service funds, if you could just send me how much debt we owe on each of those funds, or is that in here somewhere?
Oh, no, that is not in here. I can make that part of my report for next month to get you a debt amortization schedule and all of our debt.
Yeah, please.
I typically do that annually, so I will do that for my next report.
Are we close to paying any of those off?
Obviously, the capital leases, yes, the loans, no. And the Ohio Public Works Commission loans are 0% interest.
Okay.
Just, and going back to 101, as far as the electric goes, he has no capital outlay for any of the lighting, as far as lighting projects goes. We're done with lighting projects?
He's all complete with that, so now he's moving on to, the major project I guess we're moving to is the Church Street substation, and there is a capital improvement plan a part of the rate study, but right now, we're kind of on hold on the electric department, so that rate study is complete.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Do we want to schedule another meeting? Does this council want to schedule another meeting?
I would like to request that all the budget books and anything turned in to any constituent please get turned in. It's a draft, so we can work on a next draft for the next meeting.
Do you, excuse me, to the council, I'd like to make a motion that we schedule another meeting. I'd like to have somebody, does anybody have a date they'd like in mind?
Should I be heard on that issue?
Well, sure, real city manager.
My suggestion is, the next step in the process for us is to take your suggestions and try to find a way to incorporate them into a second draft, and then take that second draft and turn it into legislative form and have that appear on a council agenda. And that way, at least it's in a more hardened legislative form that you can consider as opposed to having another budget hearing, because you don't have to pass that at the first reading anyhow. So in other words, the first reading will serve as a mini-budget hearing to some extent.
So is it necessary then to have a follow-up meeting, or...
No, my suggestion is that let us convert, incorporate your changes, and then convert this into a legislative format, and then you can review it at its first reading.
Mr. Lynch, in other words, we could get by month to month until we did, and something would happen. Anna, are we bound to pass this by a certain date?
You have to pass it before the end of the year, sir.
Before the end of the year?
Yes.
But we're not bound by November 15th?
No, we just have to present a budget, which we have done that, we have already met that requirement. This legislation has to be passed before the end of the year.
Thank you very much.
Am I wrong on that?
Well, then, I'd like to make a motion and that we reconvene.
Reestablish the rules.
Reestablish the rules.
I'll make that.
Whoa, 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 wait, so anybody got anything else? I'm sorry, does anyone have any other?
We were just going to say yes to your motion.
What's that?
Go ahead.
Does anyone have anything else?
He seconded your motion.
What motion?
Put a motion on the floor.
What was the motion?
To reconvene. Back to the rules.
I'll withdraw that motion if I'm allowed, if anybody has anything else, then I'll ask for the motion again then to reconvene a meeting. Second?
Second.
Vote?
Savet?
Yes.
Waddell?
Yes.
Beer?
Yes.
Alberini?
Yes.
Bariak?
Yes.
Did that motion include other potential...
I assume that's the order of ten, because originally it was the... Get back on the rules.
Excuse me, where are we at now?
We go to the public comments section.
For the...
Wait a minute, public comments or approval of previous bits? Public comments, you're going back to the beginning?
No, number 11. Number 11, public comments.
I thought we were going to go with the mayor's report.
The way the motion's written is we are going from there and proceed through the rest, so it's public comments, closing remarks by all the parties, and if there's, I'm not aware if anybody wants an executive session or not. If not...
No, I'm not questioning.
Yep.
Public comments.
There were no public comments at the beginning, so this was in regards to your new business. Okay, the grant. Did you talk to the Newton Falls Fire, thanks sweetheart, the Fire District for the bike trail, since it's going to go right by the Fire District property, was my question, because that's where the new, the property for the Fire District is going to go right by there to Commerce Park. That was one of my questions for your resolution that you passed to go into the grant proposal that you're writing. The rest is about the budget hearings that you had. The, I have quite a few questions, and all regarding your budget. For your administrative assistant, since you are not going to pay, as you put it, top dollar, no offense, but the, is, don't all of the employees over at the annex have to be civil service? Aren't they all civil service? And wouldn't that create an issue, I guess is my concern? I know you said, Mr. Fritz, that you wanted to go unclassified, but wouldn't that be an issue if another employee would be coming in without being a civil servant? And for the grant and everything, wouldn't that go into the court's budget, that section of the court's budget, for the person that'd be working with Ms. Munson, the finance director? Or wouldn't that be added to the court's budget, or their section of the court's budget? Would be my question. I know you can't answer me, and I'm just throwing things out there, okay? And I would ask that, I know it's only a draft, I would not show it to anybody, I only just saw this tonight, can't I take it home and look at it?
No, it needs to be turned in.
Okay, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
I make notes.
Anyone else tonight for public comments? Mr. Savet?
No comments at this time.
Mr. Waddell?
Yeah, just one point. Last week, I had the opportunity of going with some other mayors, elected officials, business people in the area, the chamber, the port authority, on a flight C-110, or C-130 down to Joint Base Charleston. It was a tremendous flight, actually, it was a tremendous visit to Camp Charleston. We also visited the U.S. Coast Guard base there, but the intent of the flight was to, it's a public civic leaders tour, and it's to help promote YARS and Cav Garfield. And one of the things that they are trying to promote down there is, the base down there employs about 8,000 people, and they bring in about $9 billion worth of income from the 8,000 people that are on base and about 30,000 people that are outside of the base that have something to do with the base, whether it's additive or subtractive manufacturing. It's quite a setup. Now, Camp Garfield and YARS will never be Joint Base Charleston, however, they, YARS is now the largest employer in Trumbull County, and they are working very hard to bring in additional employees and revenue in C-130s to work on their facility. One of the things that they're doing down there now is, they can actually, they have Joint Base Charleston uses C-17 jets down there, they're a Globemaster cargo plane, what a massive plane that is, and I don't know how many was on the runway down there, 36, 37 of them, it was massive. And they can do everything down there that Boeing can do at the Boeing plant. They have a cockpit where you can go in, and they teach you how to tear the cockpit apart, how to tear all the wiring apart, how to do everything and rebuild that. They have actual operational tail fends and wings and that that work so that the maintenance guys can learn how to do that. They actually were tearing an engine down while we were there, they'd taken an engine off of a jet, and we're tearing it down and rebuilding it. The most important thing they do is they stress test all their bolts, and they do all those testings and things there, and they inject dyes into the bolts, and if there's a little crack in the bolt, you'll see the dye, and they throw that bolt out, and that bolt may be a $200 bolt, but they throw it out. It's just extremely exciting. But the biggest thing is this additive manufacturing that the city manager, J.R., I went to, what, two, three weeks ago to Impact Ohio, they're really pushing additive manufacturing in this area, and we have some of it here. In fact, I showed some of it last year, a year before, that they do over at the Computer Place on South Canal, they do additive manufacturing there for small parts. But they can actually take a part on this jetliner and build that part with additive manufacturing. They also have just large rooms of CNC machines and metal fabrication machines, things that they do with the tires and the brakes. They can literally bring a jet in on the runway, and while they fill the tanks with fuel, they can, by reverse hydraulics, bring that plane up off the ground and change a tire while they're actually filling the tanks up and put it back on, back in the air. It's quite impressive what they do down there, but it just goes to show what, if you have a base or a camp in your area, and the things that are going on in those camps and at YARS, that how we can work together to bring jobs and businesses into the valley that can benefit them, and we have the ability to bring them right here to Newton Falls, and I guess they, the fabrication guys at Joint Base Charleston were coming to, they're coming to date in, I think it's this week, to learn additive manufacturing. And part of it is there's some stress brackets in the jet, and I don't know how to explain it all, but they're real expensive parts, and they could build these parts through additive manufacturing. And it's really neat to see how they do that and how they test them, and Boeing is right there to help them if they need it. So it's exciting to see what we have with these bases and the camps here, and how we can, you know, help them and benefit them. And part of this tour is to promote and advocate for Cav Garfield and YARS, and it was, it was a really exciting flight, and it was a lot to see and do. That's all.
Mr. Beer?
I have nothing tonight.
Mr. Alberini?
I like it when you're coming, Mr. Alberini. Thank you. I'm real pleased with the investments of the Treasury Investment Board, the 6% return is simply outstanding. Also, the 6% increase in our revenues, what in the heck has happened going on on April 4? 6% increase in our revenues in City Newton Falls, that's a pretty darn good return. So I want to hats off, you know, to you folks. I think the groundwork was set in motion... I think the groundwork was set in motion prior to that with me and Mr. Haney and the prior regime, so I just want to say I appreciate that, and other communities are struggling financially, and it seems like we're on pretty solid footing, and I'm pretty proud of that fact. Thank you.
Ms. Munson? Mr. Fritz?
Nothing, sir.
City manager?
Yeah, ladies and gentlemen, I want to make sure everybody here is loud and clear, we have a boil alert, which is going to affect tomorrow morning at 9:00 for those people that live on Eagle Ridge, Red Hawk Trail, and West Broad Street from 6th to 9th Street, and this is a function of the fact that we have new construction going on. The Eagle Point Construction Project is underway, and I know there are about 50 people over there that are saying, "Hooray," right now, because it's been a long time coming. Councilman Alberini's been intimately involved in the planning for that. Councilman Savet has been bird-dogging that project even from before the time that he took the position as councilman, and if you hear me out there somewhere, Joe, I know you're not on the picket line right now, Joe Patisti, who was partly involved in the initiation of that project as well, but please, a boil alert means you boil the water for anywhere from three to five minutes, and it's what they call a rolling boil, so it's not a bubbling boil, it's a big rolling boil, but make sure you do that, and that's until further notice. For a practical standpoint, we think the boil alert will be called off sometime towards the end of the day, Wednesday, could be before then, but please wait until you confirm that the boil alert has been canceled. The other thing I wanted to mention is that our Christmas tree lighting ceremony is December 1. There's a Facebook post out there that says it begins at 7:30, it begins at 6:30. At 7:30, the actual lighting occurs because that gentleman from up north will be arriving at about 7:30, but all of Broad Street, downtown Broad Street from Center Street all the way to Canal will be turned into a little Charlie Brown Christmas area, and all of the businesses are going to be open, and how about that, on a Sunday night, all those little storefronts will be open, receiving you and your family, visitors, and come enjoy what should be a great event, and that will go from 6:30 to 7:30 with the lighting itself taking place at, excuse me, 6:30 to 8:30 with the lighting itself at 7:30 PM, so come one, come all. Mr. Chairman, that concludes my remarks this evening.
Thank you.
If I might, can we mention the cakewalk? I forgot to talk about the cakewalk on October 31st. It's 7:00 uptown, it should be a fun event as usual. Thank you.
I had the opportunity, one of my first invitations was to Prosperity for Ohio, where we, as Newton Falls, are selling our water to Southington and hopefully others, and I brought home a piece of the ribbon. There must have been 50 of us that sniffed the piece. This is ours for all of Newton Falls, and also, I attended a First Christian Church Women's Fellowship, very nice Swiss steak dinner, was a lot of good fellowship there. The Women's Fellowship does a lot for the church and a lot for the community, and we had a very good time down there. I appreciate all the support and calls I've had, I don't want to get this into a political thing, thank you, like I said before, I'm going to do all I can while I am mayor, acting mayor, excuse me, acting mayor, to do the best I can. That'll conclude my remarks, if there's nothing else.
Can I make a motion, we adjourned?
Second on that, roll call.
Waddell? Beer?
Yes.
Alberini?
Yes.
Bariak?
Yes.
Savet?
Yes.